Good evening, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the City Council to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. City Attorney, do we have a city, do we have a closed session report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do. With respect to closed sessions, the City Council received public comment during study session regarding an issue related to a challenge to the Charter Update Commission's recommendations and the actions of the council. There was threatened litigation. I told the council it had sufficient findings in order to add that to its closed session. Since it had arisen since the posting of the agenda, there was a threat of litigation. And by four-fifths vote, the council added that to the closed session and, in addition, added an open-session matter at the foot of the agenda to address the issue of the Charter Update and the public contracting provisions under eleven oh one, eleven-ten of that Charter Update. In addition to that, the council took action in closed session specifically regarding the anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation. On a seven-zero vote, it authorized the office of the city attorney to file amicus papers in the Bay Island Club versus California Coastal Commission case, supporting Bay Island with respect to its challenge to the coastal commission's imposition of public access easements across their bridge. Nothing, nothing, that was seven-zero, no further action.
Thank you. At this point, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Council Member Gardner, and please remain standing for the invocation, which will be led by Mr. Frank Carpenter.
Please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads and join me in invocation.
Heavenly Father, we entreat you, as we gather here tonight, give us wisdom and turn our hearts towards what is best and right. May we choose the path of honor in all our dealings here, treating one another with respect, as do constituents and peers. As guardians and stewards of all which falls in our purview, may our fondness for our fair city these proceedings now imbue. Amen.
Please be seated. Tonight, we are privileged to have with us some special guests, and so we're going to make a special presentation. I was very honored over the week to visit, to meet the visitor to our city, the Alcalde or Mayor Luis Silva from the city of Placilla, Chile. Placilla, for those of you who may know, is a city in the wine-producing region of Chile, a place where California gets much of its agricultural products, not to mention, we are consumers of fine Chilean wine. With him is his family, including his son Gonzalo Silva, who is also a member of the City Council in Placilla. Mr. Silva is an educator who operates some of the best schools in the country, and we are pleased to have him here. Newport Beach residents have, have been, Jeff Cannon, actually, has been an exchange student, going back to his time in high school in Chile, and is hosting him on his visit here to Newport Beach, and we are honored to have him. The Alcalde and I had the opportunity over the weekend to talk about improving relations and exchanges between our cities, and I can't think of a more splendid place in the world to increase and enhance both the understanding between our two countries than Placilla. So, Mayor Silva, may I invite you to come to the podium, if you would like, along with Carol and Jeff and people who will interpret, I believe, and then come down and we'll take some photographs, perhaps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Carol McDermott. It is my honor to introduce to you, as the mayor has indicated, Senor the Alcalde Silva. And Jeff Cannon, who has been a lifelong resident of Newport Beach, was from Corona del Mar, the exchange student, a few years ago. And his family, Diane and Dick Cannon, are also here, and they have had a twenty-two-year relationship with this family. And recently, Senor Silva was elected to the mayor's position, and he is elected at-large, and he holds a several-year term. The council is elected separately, and his position is full-time. His son was also elected to city council, and he is part-time. So they have a few differences in the way in which they're organized. But I would like to just present a little bit in Spanish on their behalf, and then Jeff will translate for the mayor, with your permission. Es un honor para presentar el alcalde de Placilla, Chile y su familia, incluyendo su esposa, hija y dos hijos y nietas. Uno es un concejal de Placilla y el alcalde es a tiempo completo, pero concejal es parcial, como en Newport Beach. Placilla quisiera encontrar la asociación de Sister City y explorar otras oportunidades entre las dos comunidades. Y por eso gracias para su hospitalidad y la oportunidad para visitar con estas personas muy, muy amables. Y por eso me presentar el alcalde Silva.
Señor Alcalde, señores concejales, estimados personas presentes de Newport Beach.
Mr. Mayor, council members, and esteemed residents of Newport Beach.
Iniciaré mis palabras empezando mis agradecimientos a las personas que hicieron posible este interesante encuentro.
My initial words, I would like to express my gratitude to the people here who have made the, this meeting possible.
Donde podré tener la oportunidad de dar a conocer ante este honorable consejo el nombre de un pueblo muy lejano en el confín del mundo llamado Placilla.
Where I could have the opportunity to present my hometown of Placilla, Chile.
Placilla es una pequeña comuna inserta en el valle de Colchagua, ubicada en el centro sur de la República de Chile.
Placilla is a small community located in the Colchagua Valley, which is in the center of the country of Chile.
Nuestra gente, en su gran mayoría, se dedica a labores agrícolas, especialmente a la producción de frutas y vinos conocidos en el mundo por su gran calidad.
Our people, by and large, are dedicated to agricultural work, where they specialize in fruit production, and of course, wine production, which is loved throughout the world.
El valle de Colchagua es hermoso y muy parecido a nuestra tierra de California. Desde ya os invito a conocerlo.
Our Colchagua Valley is a beautiful place and very similar to the, to our great state of California, and for that reason, he wishes to extend an invitation for all to come visit.
Chile como país y Placilla como una comuna, son muchos los desafíos que debemos superar. En forma especial, debemos luchar contra los embates de la naturaleza, especialmente los terremotos, que cada cierto tiempo pone a prueba nuestra fortaleza.
Like any country, like any community, sometimes we face challenging times, sometimes we face natural disasters, but we know that the true test is our ability to rise up and confront those tragic situations.
Mi gran interés, señor alcalde y señores concejales, de estar en esta reunión es la de poder intentar abrir los brazos para buscar una relación que nos permita en el futuro un intercambio.
My great interest in this meeting tonight is to, is to explore the opportunity for a relationship which he welcomes with open arms with our community of Newport Beach.
Un intercambio entre esta hermosa ciudad de Newport Beach y nuestra lejana y querida Placilla.
An exchange program between your beautiful city of Newport Beach and our wonderful city, and beloved city of Placilla.
Si yo estoy hablando frente a ustedes, es debido a un intercambio estudiantil.
If I can be here speaking in front of you, it is truly because of the nature of an exchange program.
Hace más de veinte años llegó a Chile un joven llamado Jeff Cannon.
More than twenty years ago, Jeff Cannon arrived in my community.
Iba de esta tierra, de aquí, de Corona del Mar.
He came from this land, from this place, Corona del Mar.
Mi pueblo no solo le abrió las puertas, sino que le abrimos nuestro corazón.
My town not only opened its doors, but we opened our hearts.
A él y su familia.
To him and to his family.
Ya no son extranjeros.
You are not foreigners.
Sino parte importante de nuestras vidas.
You are a very important part of our lives.
Hoy más que ayer.
Today more than yesterday.
Puedo valorar la hospitalidad y ternura de los habitantes de esta comuna.
I can validate the hospitality and warmth of, of your community, of this community.
Como también la hermosura de vuestros parques y jardines.
As well as the beauty of your parks and community resources.
Señor alcalde, señores concejales.
Mr. Mayor and council members.
En representación de la comuna de Placilla.
As a representative of the community of Placilla.
Me permito invitarlos a iniciar este camino del intercambio.
Would you please permit me to, to initiate an exchange opportunity?
Que puede ser interesante y también maravilloso.
Which I think could be very interesting and marvelous.
Solo os dejaré de recuerdo, solo os dejaré de recuerdo un libro, Chile todavía un paraíso.
I would like to leave with you a book, Chile always.
Todavía.
Always, or always a paradise.
Y también.
As well.
Un vino del valle de Colchagua.
Wine from the Colchagua Valley.
We got that part.
Que ojalá pueda compartir con sus amigos.
That you, I hope, will enjoy with your friends.
Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias, Alcalde.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gracias.
And let me, we have, David will help me here for your family, just, I did have the opportunity to present the Alcalde, the key to the city, over the weekend. We have some additional gifts for him, not as good as the wine, I'm sure. And I know our Sister City Committee wanted to come down specifically to have the opportunity to meet with you, Alcalde, and to talk about opportunities in the future. I know it's, I've been to Chile, it's a beautiful country, and I know it's a great opportunity for the people of Newport Beach to come and visit. We are so honored and thank you for coming to our community. Please have your best. The other thing Placilla has in common with Newport Beach is earthquakes, and the Alcalde has been, has been certainly dealing with the devastating effects of the recent Chilean earthquake and doing so quite effectively. Thank you for being with us and enjoy your time in California. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is a notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Thank you. Mr. Selich.
Yes, I've been getting a lot of calls and complaints, I guess you might say, about the solar panels on the slope in Irvine Terrace overlooking Bayside Drive. And primarily, they've come from folks on Bellbo Island and people that own homes down on Bayside Drive. And what I'd like to do is have the city attorney prepare a report and bring it back to us in a study session that does a couple of things. Number one, that you analyze how that project fits within our building and zoning codes. I know that I've received inquiries as such, such a large structure area-wise, how does it meet lot coverage requirements, setbacks, things of that nature. And then also, if you could give us a report on what changes, if any, the city can make to our city codes that would be in compliance with the state legislation that went into effect that allows those types of installations to override local control. Got all that?
Got it.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Rosansky.
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Proten.
I thought you were going to comment on the farmer's market.
I thought that was later on.
Okay. In any event, we did have a very successful opening of the farmer's market, and I'm very pleased that we had such good representation of the city. And this is in Lidl Marina Village, which is a great addition to that area to help it revitalize. And so I'm very pleased with all of that, and I know the owners are as well, and especially appreciate Council Member Rosansky and Council Member Gardner being there, as well as our city manager, Dave Kiff, and our president of the Chamber of Commerce. So, thanks to all, and we're off to a good start.
Thank you. Councilmember Dagel.
Yes, building on the international theme, forty-four years of outstanding yacht racing have brought a lot of attention to Newport Beach from all over the world. And this past week concluded the forty-fourth Bebo Yacht Club Annual Governor's Cup International Junior Match Racing Championship. And this year, the event featured the best young match racing talent from Australia, New Zealand, Argentina, England, Ireland, as well as Wisconsin and California. The races are supervised by international umpires, and this year, they were able to broadcast coverage from such mediums as Twitter and Facebook, and they also had photos and videos available online. And so thanks to Stacy Brandt and Megan Place for setting all that up. And each year, as you probably know, the competitors use boats that have been generously provided by our community. And so that, within that fleet, they rotate the fleet of these twenty-one-foot Alan Andrews designed boats, so the boats are a great equalizer in the race. And this year, the finals were between New Zealand Squadron and Newport Harbor Yacht Club. Newport Harbor Yacht Club was edged out in the finals, however, it is a fine, young crew. And the skipper of that, Chris Segrebloom, will be attending Yale University in the fall. And his, also on the crew were Connor Bathin and Ki Rong Chung. So congratulations for an outstanding competition. I also wanted to thank the many generous supporters. It really is a, a community effort. We had Tommy Bahamas Island Grill, Blue Water Grill, the Bebo Yacht Club, CRNR, Volcom Union Bank, Black Flies, Cravier BMW, Island Marine Fuel, Leading Edge Yacht Services, LBS Distributing, Gaylord Sportswear, and West Marine. So thanks for everyone to provide all the support and really help us put Newport Beach on the map as far as young, young sailing goes. And then secondly, I attended a forum by the Chamber of Commerce that involved Hoag Hospital, and it was for small businesses and individuals that are going to be impacted by changes in healthcare. And I really appreciate that the chamber is going to be putting on their website some of the changes that are going to take place. And as you probably know, the, for many years, you know, the healthcare was always within the domain of the state, and now the federal government is stepping in. They're not replacing the state, it's simply going to be another layer. And so for all of us, it's going to be impacting our businesses and our bottom line, so I would encourage you to, to connect with the chamber or other forums so that you can stay informed. But to give you an example, beginning in, in 2014, if you're not insured, you're going to have to start paying a tax to do that. Begins, it's kind of the, the stick approach. It begins as a toothpick, about ninety-five dollars a year, and within a couple of years, it grows to several thousand dollars per year. So these types of disincentives through the tax system, you know, are really aimed at, at achieving some of these healthcare objectives. So I'd encourage you to stay informed. Thank you.
Councilmember Gardner.
Nothing.
Councilmember Webb.
I won't take Mr. Curry's thunder, but I did join him on the adventure to Antib France, and we had a wonderful time. And I'd like to brag a little bit about my wife, because Connor Bathin, on the winning team, was one of her students early in his educational career.
Thank you. Well, I will, will mention that here a little bit. First of all, just to make note to the public that in, in the mailboxes in the next few days, you're going to receive a citizen satisfaction survey. It's a mail-back-in survey, and I do hope you'll take the time to fill it out, because we sincerely want to know what you think about city services, how you interact with the city, and it's your opportunity to really tell us how we can improve and do things better. We take that very seriously. We responded to the results of the 2008 survey, we want to compare how we're doing, and your participation help will, will enable us to do that. I also want to take note, as was mentioned by Councilmember Webb, that I was honored to join him for the twentieth anniversary of our Sister City visit with Antib France. Both Don and I were there, not at city expense for either one of us, I might add, but it was an absolutely delightful experience. Antib was inaugurating their eighth sister city, Cronogorsk, Russia, which is a suburb of, of Moscow. Mayor Leonetti of Antib was very keen about the fact that he could get an American and Russian mayor together, and both the mayor from Crongonsk and myself mugged for the cameras to support world peace on behalf of our French friends. Also present were mayors from Alberg, Denmark, Olympia, Greece, Disanzo, Del Gardia, Italy, Alat, Israel, Kinsale Island, and Swashbish, Germany. So there was a distinguished group of sister cities to Antib, we're proud to be part of it. It's also the fiftieth anniversary of their jazz festival, and I was very pleased to note that Newport Beach's own Samantha Smith was able to perform. She jammed with the same band that supported George Benson and did a marvelous job on behalf of our community during, what was the fiftieth Jazz Awan Jazz Festival in Antib. Let me make also note that the GFOA has once again awarded the city of Newport Beach the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The financial reports we do, the comprehensive financial reports, the budgets, the budget documents, have been recognized by our peers for their excellence, for their informational content, and for their clarity in terms of understanding, and I want to commend Tracy and Dan and our entire staff for once again, and this has been several years in a row, winning this prestigious award. On Saturday, I was pleased to be with the Back Bay Friends and Naturalists and Sokal Papa for their Back Bay Paints the Bay Art fundraiser held at the Moof Center. Some terrific artists did some absolutely splendid painting of the back bay, and if you didn't get a chance to go there, I encourage you to check it out. And there were some marvelous paintings that were available for purchase that capture the glory of, of the back bay. This week, I held two meet-the-mayor sessions, one at Muldoons, which was a little bit out of the ordinary, but had some fun with that, and then at the Corona del Mar Library, where we had the largest turnout yet. We had about twenty people who came to talk about the community and express their concerns, and it was a pleasure to be with them. Also had the opportunity to do a walkthrough of the new Oasis Center. Let me just say, you're going to be, I think, surprised and awed when it opens in October, and this is going to be a facility everybody in the city is going to be very proud of. On Sunday, I participated and opened the Concerts in the Park with the Hutchins Consort, a just marvelous musical group of violins, violins like you've never seen before. As part of the show, the mayor got to play two notes on the violin. I'm now a retired violin player, but it was just a terrific concert. The next one will be, our next concert in the park will be August eighth, the Benita Canyon Park, where we'll have a Beatles tribute show. Finally, let me just make note about the situation in the city of Bill, because a lot of people have asked, following that, you know, how much are you guys getting made, and do we have the same situation here, and what's really the story? And let me just say, I think I speak for all of my colleagues, when I say that we are both appalled and shocked and disgusted by what went on in the city of Bill. It gives government a bad name, it gives elected officials a bad name, it is behavior that ought to be investigated by the DA or the Attorney General, and it certainly has no place in any community in California. Let me say for the record that the salaries and the benefits for all of the council members and all of our city staff, it's contained in the budget document, it's been in the libraries for months, it's there every year, it's updated every year. Council members make fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. The mayor makes twenty thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety cents. With all benefits are included, it ranges from about thirty thousand to thirty-eight thousand, except for Don, because he's retired, he only costs fourteen thousand. So, let me just assure everybody out there.
Can we reduce yours?
After I mayor, it will be reduced. So let me simply say that we are not Bill, we share your disgust in that, and we are committed to making sure that we have transparent government here in Newport Beach, so the kind of problems that they have certainly don't exist here. And let me just recognize our city manager, who I think also wants to make some comments on this.
Just before you start, I think the other thing is that we all serve on a lot of committees, we are not paid to serve on those committees. Anything in the city, the city committees, we just, that's part of our job. So there, that was one way that they started to increase their salaries, and it's not something we do.
That's exactly right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. As the mayor noted, that document that he held up isn't available in libraries and here at City Hall, it's also available on the website, and it's been on the website since we developed our web, the robust website that we have years ago. So if anybody wanted to look, again, you can click on that document, it's called the Budget Detail, and you can look in each department, and you can find out what each one of us makes. It's in there, including salaries and benefits. You'll see the other things in there, like travel, et cetera. So I think that transparency is something that's very important to the council, it's important to me, it's important to our staff. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the consent calendar, Madam City Clerk.
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items one through fifteen, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on a motion unless members of the council staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Let me, let me point out, by the way, because I think some people are interested in this, we're not here in the room when it happened, we've added an item at the end of the agenda to talk about language changes to the charter language, and we'll consider that at that point in time. Okay? So, let me ask my colleagues if they have any items to pull from the agenda. Councilmember Dagel.
Yes, I need to recuse myself from number five, NextG Telecom, and then I would like to pull number eleven.
Okay. Councilmember Gardner.
Three and fifteen.
I have none.
Thank you. Mr. Selich.
I have none.
Mr. Rosansky.
None, thank you.
Mr. Hen.
I have none.
And I have none. Does anyone from the audience have any item they'd like to pull from the consent calendar?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Fifteen's been pulled? Okay, Mr. City Manager, any items you'd like to see pulled?
No, sir.
Okay. Let me bring this in, does anyone have any public comments on any of the items not pulled from the consent calendar?
Do I have a long panel?
No, public comment for other items is later on. Unless you have a consent calendar item, it's not, that hasn't been pulled.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I think this gentleman was here for item thirteen last time, and what, what I did as a result of his comments was...
what I did as a result of his comments was direct that that be put on the agenda. It remains on the consent calendar, and you'll vote on it now. I don't know if he wanted to speak to that.
Oh, yeah.
Well, why don't you come forward now, sir, and speak before we vote?
All right. Before you guys vote. All right. Yeah, hi, guys. I'm Matthew Thomas, and to the council, and to Keith Curry. And I was just, I had some, you said you were going to have some statistics of that stuff, you know? And then, there's, this is from the U.S. Department of Transportation, and you guys remember, I don't think she was here last time. This is for the RBS, the sponsor of beverage service training in Newport Beach, because we just did one in Coron del Mar, because it got busted by the ABC doing the minor decoy program in a restaurant. And see, they weren't trained, and they didn't have the adequate measures to do it. But there's 200,000 people that died in alcohol-related accidents in the past 10 years, and 708,000 are injured, and 74,000 suffered serious injuries. And mine was just a head injury, and I only went through a coma for three months, two and a half months, came out, you know, with all this, but you guys have been helping me out with social security disabled insurance. Thanks, guys, you know, and so I have for 19 years, you know, and then we have, then with that, there's 65% of the single car accidents that are fatal, or that's in California, and if, I know it's California, but what does everyone in California want to go? Let's go to Newport Beach, you know, and so that's just the main place to go. And if you have trainings that are all around the area, like Irvine, because we just did one in Coron del Mar, you know, and there's that whole different issue right there, and then, you know, okay, and then we'll get to Orange County. There are 13,000 adult arrests in alcohol-related, 13,000 per year. 13,000 people get arrested. How many people don't? You know, how many people, I'm going to ask you, how many people don't get arrested that don't? And that wasn't kids either, you know, the underage drinking that goes around in the city. And then there's, and that's out of 200,000 in California, you know, with all that, you know. So, this is Agenda 13, and I just wanted to say, because that is a huge, huge thing, and because we're serving drugs to the community, you know, and we don't, it's like, okay, have one for the road, I'll see you tomorrow, but what happens if they run into your family and kill the whole family, and they come out scathed clean?
Thank you. And I, thank you, and we probably should have pulled that item, but as we did, we took it here. And Mr. Kiff, I know you have a report on this, you just want to make some comments about what we're doing in this regard as a city.
Sure. As a result of this gentleman's comments, at the last meeting, I asked Police Chief Johnson to prepare a report that talks about the training that we do, and of course, any training that would happen in Coron del Mar is our training too, in case people forget that Coron del Mar is part of Newport Beach. So, that staff report shows that, and if you have any questions about it, I'm happy to answer that.
Thank you. Is there a motion then on the consent? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on an item that's on the consent calendar to be voted on now that hasn't been pulled? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Consent Calendar items 1 through 15, except items 3, 11, and 15, and noting Councilmember Daigle's recusal on item number 5.
Second. Second, please vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, first item, then next item, then will be item number 3.
Yet yours passed.
Yours was voted on.
It's approved.
Approved?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do I, um, so how does I know what happened with that? I don't know, did we get a circuit?
No, Mr. Kiff can explain it to you later. It was a report on the actions that we're involved in currently. Maybe the police officer can explain to you also what we're doing.
Okay, all right, cool, thank you.
Thank you. That's the chief, he really, he's a smart guy, too.
(laughter)
Councilmember Gardner?
This ordinance amending dogs on the beach. Dogs and trees, I mean, I hate to wade into either, either one. However, I was down, two Sundays ago, at Big Corona, about 4:30, and I just went down to run, and I'm used to running on the beach and running back and forth until I hit my miles, and I went one lap and said, this is it. I felt like I was, you know, on a ping-pong table or something. There were so many people there that it was just, I couldn't run. And the thought of having people with their dogs on leashes down there on a busy Sunday or something just doesn't seem to me like a very good idea. On the other hand, why we have the restricted hours we do during the winter, I mean, I'm down there running in the winter, and there's not a soul there lots of times, so I'm not quite sure. I know it's easy to have one time for everybody, but I'm wondering why we don't keep what we have for the summer, because, at least for the weekends. If we want to extend it maybe during the week, that's fine, though. I just think these summer weekends with a little more time, with more dogs, is not necessarily the best idea. So, I pulled it to see if anybody else had any hesitations about it. Nobody likes waiting on dogs, I know. I'm a dog owner, by the way, I'm a dog owner, so I, you know, it's not like I'm unsympathetic about dogs.
Well, is there any public comment on this? Why don't I open up the public comment? I think that'd be illuminating. Please come to the podium, state your name, you'll have three minutes, and let us know your thoughts on this matter.
My name is Shirley Reinker, R-E-I-N-K-E-R. Been a resident of West Newport for 36 years, have always had a dog, always exercised with my dog on the beach. We're thankful for the time we do have on the beach and appreciate the efforts at animal control to respond to emergencies. In 1996, I was involved with a group such as this, convinced and convinced city council to allow us to use the beach from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. year-round, instead of just 9:00 to 5:00 in winter. It has worked, but we've always wished we could use the beach during winter unrestricted or at least have more time. That would leave, summer hours leave them the way they are. In fact, what we're most concerned about is winter. During the period between November and February, a sunset is before 5:00 or a little after 5:00, which doesn't give us much time to get us in a safe walk or run while it's still light. In the mornings, it's cold and dark, and it would be nice not to jolt out of bed and rush out at the crack of dawn, get some distance with, in with the dogs, maybe have coffee or breakfast and have, be back before 9:00. Can't do it. During stormy weather, we sometimes have to wait for a break and, to take the dog out, and then it's too late to do the beach. That's winter. The beach is mostly empty during the winter days, except for a few surfers and walkers and a few others, with the exception of a few fluke Santayanas or holidays. Otherwise, it's empty. However, if we could just, if we could extend at least the hours, the 10:00 a.m. would help, and 4:00 p.m. would be better. The difference between 4:30 and 4:00 doesn't seem to matter that much to beachgoers, even in the summer, but it makes a big difference to us during the winter. We have a beautiful, natural place to exercise our dogs and fresh air and peacefulness, and a lot of us consider our backyard, especially those that live in the oceanfront. It seems a waste of public open space for us to force us to walk our dogs in areas which are unhealthful and unsafe, while the beach remains virtually unused. This is especially true in West Newport, where our sidewalks are almost nonexistent, and in some places, we have to walk in the bike lane on seashore, dodging cars, bikes, skateboarders, skaters. In fact, if we walk to the pier from our home at 54th Street and go to the pier, stay until 9:00, we can't even walk the boardwalk to get home. Now, we're on Balboa with cars and pollution and crossing every little street with cars darting in and out. This is not a pleasant walk with a dog. Also, cleaning up the beaches, cleaning up on the beach is a lot easier than in someone's planter on the street. The people who live in West Newport along the boardwalk have another big problem, for some exercising the beaches and for them, and they would like to step out of their front door and walk. If they, if they even step out there after 9:00 or before 5:00, they're in violation. Uh-oh, my second page.
I, I think we got the gist of it, ma'am.
Sorry, I'm taking up my minutes, right? We know us, we know us responsible dog owners clean up, but there's always the few violators who don't. We have laws against cigarettes on the beach, glass on the beach, littering on the beach. Then why, why do we say we can't use, then do we say we can't use the beach because, people can't use the beach because they don't keep it clean? As time goes on, our furry little friends become very much a part of our family. For some older folks, it extends our lives by just having them, but they must be exercised to be better dogs, and we must have to exercise to become healthier, happier people. Why, why dogs are even, dogs are even allowed in Fashion Island, they can even check into the Balboa Bay Club, but we can't leave them out on the beach during the winter? I invite council to take a walk along the beach with us and take note of how much litter is left by beachgoers compared to the dog litter that is left by irresponsible dog owners. In fact, most dog walkers that are regulars clean up people droppings and dog droppings alike. Thank you for considering some extra beach time for the taxpaying dog owners of Newport Beach.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Michael Hernig. I've lived in Newport Beach about 18 years. I actually live right on the beach, between 44th and 45th. I walk my dog twice a day, and there are some problems. Honestly, I can't agree with this gardener anymore. The summer hours are perfectly fine. The real problem is in the winter, when essentially sunset is so early, you really can't do a walk in the afternoon with your dog. Also, as Shirley mentioned, the beach is essentially vacant for much of the winter. Problems with, are particular for a lot of elderly people who also walk their dogs. I know several. You know, as people get older, low-light vision becomes less acute, and mixing that with uneven ground on the beach makes walking your dog at night particularly, well, it's actually dangerous, especially with the jetties out there. I know I've tripped, and I have pretty good vision. The idea of having a single law, which basically just doesn't really help much, I mean, an extra 30 minutes in the winter only gives about 15 minutes before sunset for almost two months out of the year. The rest of the year, or rather, the summer, the hours are perfectly fine. I don't really see a particular need to have a single law which adds one hour in the morning, 30 minutes in the evening, when what really should happen is leave the hours in the summer the same and actually change the winter hours to allow dogs during the day when it's much more safe to walk. That's it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Let's, out of courtesy to the other speakers, let's try and refrain from applause one way or the other, that way we'll be able to accommodate everybody who wants to speak and do it quickly. Yes, ma'am? State your name, please.
My name is Trish Knapp, and I've lived in the area for 40 years, and I too have had dogs, and I currently have a dog. And being now in the senior category of years, I find it difficult, when I'm down on the Big Corona, of getting up the hill with the two hips in time to not get ticketed by the animal control that seems to be walking right or be very close to where I am. So, I'm all in favor of having one more hour in the morning and at least a half hour in the afternoon. So, we would appreciate it if, if we could come to an agreement on that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak on this topic?
My name's Christopher Stunteman, and I've lived here all my life, and I've had dogs all my life, and I appreciate that those are, that those here are willing to consider these change in hours during the winter in Newport Beach, and I understand your concerns. But my request is based upon discussions with other responsible pet owners that will pick up after their dogs and pay attention to the dog's surroundings, and, and if you would feel more comfortable with these, yeah, if you would feel more comfortable with these extended hours being offset by higher fines imposed upon those that don't respect the necessity to pick up after their dogs, I'm in agreement with that. And I want to be able to give my pet and myself, as well as, as well, quality time at the beach year-round. My only desire, I'm asking for you to take into consideration, is extending those hours in the wintertime and for a safer, shorter, light hours. Those dog owners visiting the beach in the off-season months are going to be typically locally residents only. Thank you for taking your consideration of my time. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers on this topic? Yes, sir, please come forward.
My name is Greg Reinker. I live in Lido Sands, I've lived there for 36 years, walk our dogs twice a day, every day. I would want to mention a couple of things real quickly, and then I've got a letter to read from Dr. Kimberly Jamison. We have noticed one thing, and that is that, over the years, the beach is much, much cleaner now than it used to be. People are more conscientious now. We ourselves will pick up after other people. We walk either from 54th down to 15th, or the other way down to the Santa Ana River, and I would say 99 times out of 100, there's no dog litter on the beach. There used to be a lot. So, it is, it has improved. Second, real brief point, when we first started talking about this, we talked to somebody from the city about changing the signs, and the idea was, you could either change the time all year round by just putting a sticker and changing the time. If you wanted to just leave the summer hours the same and have no hours in the winter, you could also do that with just a sticker that said, "No dogs on the beach, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m." and just make it from June 15th to September 15th. In other words, the summer, and then have no hours in the, in the winter. I hope you understand what I'm saying. Anyway, this letter is from Kimberly, Dr. Kimberly Jamison. She lives at 4800 Neptune. Here's her letter. "Thank you to our city council and city staff for considering this request to increase beach access hours for leashed dogs and their owners. I'd like to start by pointing out that the extension of beach access hours for dogs is a much-needed and long-sought-after request. It is made on behalf of a much larger contingent of Newport Beach citizens and residents than are represented here today. It should be viewed as a level of service issue for the city, because the many responsible dog owners who live and own residence in Newport Beach have been greatly underserved with respect to this issue compared to other cities in the area. Newport Beach is unique in this area of California as a city that does not have a designated dog park, and although one is planned for the new city hall site, this does not address the needs of responsible dog owners in West Newport, who very much need better options for exercising their four-legged family members. Animal control officers and animal behavior experts will attest to the fact that dogs that are properly exercised are far less likely to create public disturbances, less likely to escape their homes, and are thus, and are therefore less likely to require costly attention from the city's animal control personnel. The issue can be viewed as a public safety issue. In West Newport in the winter, there are few options for dog owners that work normal business hours to walk their leash paths in daylight without the risk of encountering automobile traffic on a dark street, often without the benefit of a proper sidewalk in West Newport. Permitting owners the additional opportunity to walk on the beach in the AM and PM would allow greater flexibility in this regard. Moreover, considerations of this issue is needed due to this planned Sunset Ridge Park site. Our understanding is that dogs will be prohibited from the playing fields and other grassy public areas..."
Your time has expired, so...
Oh, okay.
I think we get the gist of the letter, though.
Anyway, she has, she has a pretty long letter she wrote.
All right, well, we can take it into the record.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the city council. Councilmember Gardner?
Well, first of all, we have to realize, we dog owners, that there are a lot of people that do not share our love for the animals, and they do deserve consideration also. I'm for, and I don't know how we can do it most easily, but certainly, I would keep our summer hours, but I would open it up, and I don't know, I don't know whether we would just have no dog hours or extended dog hours in the winter, but I see no reason not to. I don't see that it affects the, the use of the beach, because, as you say, except for a few exceptions, the beaches are not occupied much during, during the winter. So, that would be my direction.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with Councilwoman Gardner. Several years ago, I tried to see about revising the dog hours, and I got as far as a study session, I think, and not a lot of support for that. But I agree, the beach is empty for eight, nine months out of the year.
Mr. Webb?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recommended action, and add to that, though, that we refer this item of dogs on the beach in the wintertime to the PBNR Commission for their review to give us advice, since they are the ones that kind of control the, the beach activities, and that way, they can look at the various different concerns, one way or the other, and then come back with us, to us with a recommendation. and then come back with us, to us with the recommendation.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, not to interrupt, but just note, this, this item did come to PBNR, and this was their recommendation through them. But if you'd like it to go back, that...
Did they consider taking the hours away in the wintertime?
Let me ask recreation staff that if Matt or...
I think I could probably speak to that.
Sorry, Captain Johnson.
Captain Dale Johnson. That was a matter, from a historical perspective, as, as most of you are aware, somewhere years ago, that was the case, where the winter hours were somewhat different than the, than the summer hours. The reason that was brought to you for a change, and the reason it was changed initially just had to do with kind of confusion with the enforcement aspect of it. We found that particularly those that come from outside the city to utilize the beaches somewhat confused as to the hours and the times and the times of the year that they were allowed on the beach with the dogs and the times that they weren't. And it, it certainly made it difficult for our animal control people when they would contact people that had, that were in violations, that just legitimately weren't aware that the times had changed and from one day to the next, and the months that they were allowed and the months that they weren't. And so that was the reason why it was changed initially, and that was during our discussions with PBNR and with the Recreation Department, the reason why this particular recommendation was made.
Okay. Mr. Webb has offered a motion. Is there a second?
Well, can I finish my comment before? I think somehow I got cut off here. I don't, I don't know why that happened, but I was not finished with my thought.
Excuse me.
So in any event, I, we tried to change this several years ago, not much success. Personally, I, I see no reason not to open up the beaches in the winter. I mean, I, I respect what the officer just said, but basically, we're penalizing our residents because a few people come from out of the city and can't read one of our signs. So maybe it's a language issue with the sign that needs to be addressed, which I think a lot of smart people over in General Services or the City Manager's Office, I'm sure they can figure out verbiage that would be appropriate. So I would be supportive of what Councilmember Gardner was asking for. Thank you.
All right. Let me roll the tape back that a little bit. Mr. Webb has offered a motion. Is there a second? Hearing none. Mr. Hinn.
So I, I would move that we leave the summer hours unchanged and eliminate the prohibition on dogs during the winter.
You need to give me some dates. Yeah.
I'd say June through September.
June one through September thirty.
That makes it easy, uh-huh.
Well, September fifteenth, I'd say. Gets you through Labor Day.
Do I hear the twentieth? No.
I don't know, fifteenth. I mean, because the beach, the whole area dies after Labor Day.
Why don't we say from late, from Memorial Day, because that is a big beach holiday, through September fifteenth?
So on the day of Memorial Day?
No, no, I, I'll, if I may interject, because it changes every year. People, some, you know, there's people who don't know what Memorial Day is or when that is, unfortunately. And so I would say, you need to go with the date certain.
May fifteenth. May fifteenth to September fifteenth.
May fifteenth through September fifteenth, the dogs would be prohibited on the beach between the existing hours, which are nine to five. The rest of the time, there's no restriction.
That, I mean, that gives reasonable, there's enough light and everything, and the weather's nice and...
Did you, okay, that's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion second. Is there any further discussion on this topic?
Yeah, I'm not going to support the motion. I think it's going to create too confusing of a situation. Personally, I think we just ought to leave, leave things the way they are. I think if we vote on this tonight, it's not the last we're going to hear of it.
All right, well, any other comments? All right, seeing none, please vote on the motion as offered by Mr. Hinn.
With Councilmembers Selich and Webb voting no, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
So before we leave this item, then, just for the public certification, this is first reading, so it would return to you at our next meeting for a second reading, and then adoption would be thirty days later if you passed it at second reading.
Thank you. Item eleven.
Sure.
Mr. Webb?
Yes, this is, involves our financing of our civic center, and I have a question for staff. Are we going to have all of our construction documents and cost estimates in hand so that we're ready to bond by the deadline?
Sure.
And Mayor, members of council, we will have, I think, what we, what we consider close enough cost estimate, that would be kind of the upper end of what would be needed to be financed. We are working on cost estimates right now, and we're about halfway through the construction document phase. So we would expect that to, to be sufficient number as, as an estimate, that'd be used as an upper limit for the amount of bonding. And as we get closer to the actual bidding, the number will get refined downward.
Well, in fact, isn't the sequence of events that we're going to have the bids in hand before we do the financing?
Well, I think we, we change that.
I'll check with Tracy McCrainer, Finance Director. On the calendar, we are coming to council in October, sorry, for the financing schedule. We're coming to council October twelfth to get preliminary approval to enter into the bond issues. At that time, we'll have not to exceed amount. On October twenty-fifth, on our bond, or bond schedule, we should have the final cost estimates, which I checked with Mr. Batum, and he said that is true. Then we have a Tuesday council meeting, October twenty-sixth, where you will be doing the final vote.
But it's, so it's a cost estimate, not a bid?
Right. The actual bids won't occur until we actually bid the trade packages, which will occur in November and December.
But the borrowing reflects, the ultimate borrowing will reflect what the actual bids were. So you're talking about an authorization and then, but the actual borrowing will be lower than that and will reflect the actual bids.
So the borrowing will not happen until we have the bid.
That's correct.
That was my point, which I think is going to have to happen in the sequence of events sometime pretty close to the twenty-sixth or so of October.
Right, we have bond pre-pricing on November second and bond pricing on November third.
Does that answer your question? Okay, then, then is there a motion on item, or the recommended action? Move the action on item eleven? Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak on this matter? All right, seeing none, please vote.
Oh, do you have a second?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item fifteen.
Yes, some time ago, I was contacted by people who wanted to do a bike race, not a bike race, a bike event, and wanted to come through Newport Beach and were running into some problems. And the way that they described it, it didn't seem like much of an issue because it was going to be, as I say, not a race. It was something where people came off, they were sort of teared as they started off, and they went at their own speed, and they were instructed to stop and obey all traffic signals and that sort of thing. So it didn't seem like, I mean, it seemed sort of like a no-brainer. Well, go ahead, might not come down. They wanted to come down the Back Bay route from Irvine. And when it was sent to recreation, however, they have felt that it was similar to another bike, bike event that is also not a race, but that people race in and they have problems. I think I'm expressing this correctly, and they'll clarify. And that it did require police and staff monitoring. And because of that, it came under the category of a certain kind of event in which we only approve a certain number. And at this point, I really want more information, I guess, because if we only do a dozen of these events, I'm not sure that the, if we want to make an exception for an event that benefits a parish in Irvine, I would think that if we were going to make the exception, we would make it for something that benefited Newport Beach residents more specifically. But I'd also like to give staff a chance, and I think, are you the proponent, the proponent a chance to explain perhaps why he feels that this is not really necessary to have this category before we make a final decision on it?
All right, if there's no council comments at this time, let me invite the, I don't want to say the applicant, the proponent of the race to come forward, perhaps make some comments.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Cameron Jackson. I'm here on behalf of Saint John Neumann Catholic Parish. I'm joined today with my esteemed colleague, I suppose, my good friend, Father Anthony Foo. He is a pastor at the council, at the parish. A couple of things. First, this event is our first year, so already I can tell you the numbers for it are very low. So, and I'll get into that in just a second, but it, it is intended to be a low-impact event. It's a, it's a charity bike ride that we have to stagger riders when they leave Irvine from. So there's not any mass pelotons, and we're not, it's, it's not a race. The ride starts at seven o'clock in the morning. It's in October, which is an off-season, and it is intended to hit your city at approximately seven-thirty in the morning. And with different paces of riders, I would expect the last rider to be out of your city by nine a.m. We'd really like to showcase your city. Back Bay is a beautiful area of Orange County. Be nice to let our riders come down that Back Bay and experience that. This event benefits our youth programs at the parish. It doesn't go for anything else but for the youth, youth programs so that they can expand their, their religious needs. This event is open to the public, so we've got many community members already that have signed up for it that aren't parishioners. We invite everybody. We have somebody from Sacramento who's going to be riding in it. And last but not least, our primary sponsor is a Newport Beach business, Bike Religion, which is located over on PCH in Riverside. John Zemberg owns that organization, that business. Now, in respect to what the staff members wrote as far as their denial is concerned, they put in there that it could have up to a thousand riders. While it's billed on the event that the, that the cap is fifteen hundred, as of now, we have thirty-three registered riders. And of those thirty-three riders, twenty-five of them are going to be riding through your city. My anticipation is that a hundred or less total will be coming through. And in addition to that, the majority of our riders will be parishioners who, informally polling, majority are doing the eleven and thirty-mile rides, which don't even touch Newport Beach. Second of all, it says that they'll need at least two police officers. I was at one time a police officer down in the city of San Diego. I also ran the student security program for San Diego State University. I've either prepared, helped in training or in organization, or have worked events with ten thousand-plus people, events like San Diego State graduation, Lollapalooza, Super Bowl, Fourth of July down at the beach, and the 2001 biotech convention. I can tell you that, you know, I don't see where a hundred riders at this point would warrant any police necessary, and none of the other cities that we'll be riding through have requested that we have police officers, including Irvine. Additionally, it says that the event may impact, well, it's going to be impactful because the following weekend, on October sixteenth, is the MS Ride, which is apparently the ride that gives you the most amount of problems. While this year we're locked into October ninth, we would be flexible for following years. Finally, it says that, actually not finally, but it says that the, there's a marine life inventory event that is occurring that same day. My, I guess my question is if it's, if it's that much of a safety concern, are they shutting down Back Bay for vehicles as well as pedestrians and traffic to accommodate this event, or is it an event that is just being held off the way?
Is it Coastal Cleanup Day?
No, it is not Coastal Cleanup Day. It's Marine Life Inventory Event. And the last thing that they talk about in the denial report is that if they make an exception for this event, you know, then the floodgates will open. And, you know, and in addition to that, if they're going to make an exception, it should be for a local event, a local organization. And I went and I asked what the organizations were that currently are allowed, the twelve. And of the twelve, five of them are not Newport Beach or Corona del Mar groups, and three of them are, their parent companies aren't even in California. Or, excuse me, two of them aren't in California, and one of them's not even in Orange County. So I hope that certainly we would qualify as more local as that, than that. And then, just kind of summing up, safety concerns as far as the marine life inventory, I, I don't think there's any safety concerns as far as that's concerned. Number three is, it doesn't set a precedent. I say...
Can you sort of...
Yeah, I'm almost finished.
Thank you.
And I, I say if, you know, maybe it needs to be an open bid process. And number three, and finally, I, I just don't think the event is going to have any impact on the city. We're going to be in and out as quickly as possible, and there's not very many people riding. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that'd like to speak on this matter? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring him back to the council. Mr. Selich.
Yeah, I just have a question. If, if this is a, a ride that they stop at stop signs and obey all the traffic laws and don't need police escorts, where do we even have the ability to regulate them? I mean, any group of thirty bicycle riders can ride through the city. I see packs of fifty riding down Coast Highway all the time, and we don't get special event permits from those people.
Mr. Selich, I think you make a good point, and I, I know, we, we do have a process when folks come to us and ask to schedule an event, and at that point, you're in the process. So if we don't know about it, sometimes we don't know about it. There's a huge January first ride that our police department's very familiar with, where they just about take over Coast Highway headed south, and those folks don't get a permit. We just know they're coming. So I don't really have a good answer to your question, sir.
Mr. Congressman Diggel?
Yeah, I don't see a real substantial impact. You know, it's thirty-five riders, and it's not even possible that they may all be in the same group by the time they reach the Back Bay. They said about eight will have already dropped out at that point. So if you look at the impact, you know, I don't see a big problem for them to be there. That's just my perspective. And I'm not really sure why we would need police. And indeed, I think what Councilman Selich said is true. I mean, the pelotons that are coming through and informal group rides are far more substantial.
Mr. Rosansky?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. I think at this point, this is kind of a de minimis thing. I mean, certainly if you had the good fortune to have fifteen hundred riders, at some point in time, we'd probably have a different response for you. But, I mean, if you're talking, and we're going to trust you, I guess, assuming you're going to get what sounds like an approval to conduct your race, that it will be fairly low-key, spread out, and not very impactful to the community. Otherwise, we'll be talking a different story next year.
Well, if we're going to do this, can we do it in a way that it doesn't become a thirteenth event? I'd hate to set a precedent for waiving things here.
I just, if the other cities are not requiring the police, do we need to?
Well, let me at least give the staff a chance to maybe respond. I know, again, Captain John, Captain Johnson is here, and then Matt Dingwall's here from recreation, if they'd like to make any comment about their thoughts on that, rather than my interjecting my thoughts as a cyclist.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Are you a dog owner, too?
Here at the beach?
Captain Dale Johnson, I, I think that our concerns with the event had to do with as originally applying for, which talked about up to a thousand riders. Thirty-five riders, I agree with everything that you've said in terms of their ability to navigate the city. What we see with the bigger groups that come through, despite the, the organizer's very sincere, you know, hopes that it's not a race, it turns into one. And that's, you know, we are all very sensitive to cyclist safety and the, the number of riders and motor vehicles on the roadways these days. So that, that was, from the police department's perspective, that was largely our, our opposition to it. And again, that is, that is my understanding of how it was applied for with a much larger event than was discussed here today. And I'll, I'll let Matt respond to the rest.
Good evening, councilmembers. I, I agree with Captain Johnson and with you as well. If it's thirty-five riders, that's probably a non-issue. As Captain Johnson discussed, when it was originally presented to us, it was presented as something much bigger, so. And one thing to consider is that, yeah, sometimes these things start out small, the first year they're small, but usually they grow and they're a lot bigger. So, so that's something to keep in mind.
Well, I think as it grows, if they continue to grow, it would eventually come, or they would have to have the police, and that would, then we would have to do it. So that's something you need to be thinking about in terms of your, the proponent, in terms of your future, is will you be able to be, get that permit when you get to a certain size, or will you need to find another route if we don't change our policy or something? Just future planning.
Mr. Hinn?
I'd like to make a suggestion that you just withdraw your application and run your race. I'm not kidding about that.
The one other thing I did want to point out is that we do get about, you know, two of these requests, you know, per month. So, you know, depending on what happens here, you know, that could affect, you know, the other requests that come in, so.
That's, that's, I just assumed not set a precedent here about adding a thirteenth event here. So just withdraw your application and run your race.
Or do we get to the same point if we all vote no on, on the recommendation to deny?
Mr. Mayor, may I? It may be, well, first of all, it's not a race, but the, the, it may be just as efficient as to have staff make a determination, as Matt Dingwall just said, that this is not the type of event that requires permit and then allow them to proceed forward, and we sort of avoid the artfulness of just withdrawing the application. I, I don't know if Matt and Rec is willing to do that.
Mr. Rosansky seems to have an answer.
Yeah, why don't, is it city attorney? Is it possible to just make a motion or amend this thing back to the staff for further action?
action without us taking any action?
I, I don't think you need any action at all if, if Rec will make the determination right now that in light of the testimony tonight, this is a, this is an event that does not require a permit. Is that inaccurate? I see Laura and Sean nodding.
It's her nodding. Okay.
And I believe they've made that determination, therefore, the Grand Fondo does not need a permit because of its size. If it does increase, it may fall under the criteria requiring permits, but this year, they get to do it, and it is not an exception to your 12th race policy.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. With that, you're seeing government being made today, ladies and gentlemen. With all of its, with warts and all. All right, so we'll now move on to oral reports from the city council on committee activities. Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, our citizens aviation committee meets monthly, also serving as Councilman Webb, Councilman Selich, and I would encourage you to get on our, we call it our interested parties list, and we will continually provide you with updated information on, on these various issues. And yesterday at our committee meeting, the airport did share flight data, as it looks like flying over Balboa Island at Ruby and Collins. So if you want to get on our list, I would encourage you to do so, either email myself or the city manager. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
The Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee was presented with, or had a presentation from the Harbor Master and Harbor Resources, and we will be doing a DITAB program for visitors to our harbor. So that's something that's been requested by people for a long time, and we finally, we have, our new, relatively new Harbor Master has just changed the whole attitude there, and we're getting such wonderful cooperation. I certainly want to salute them on that. And also, I sat in for Councilman Webb at the Orange County Sanitation District Operations Committee. You can imagine what a huge contribution I made, my knowledge of engineering being zilch. But thanks to Mr. Webb, we are going to, residents are going to have much less problems when they do this big program, project along Pacific Coast Highway. What they were doing was they were building, or digging new manholes so they could check out the state of the pipe, and they found out that the pipe was in bad shape. Not surprising it's so old. So the, the original plan was to dig all these manholes and check all of the pipe, and then, and of course, that would close all the streets and dig them up and everything, and then come back later and do whatever replacements they had to do and repairs. And thanks to Mr. Webb's leadership, they have decided to do it all at one time. So instead of digging up the streets twice, they only take it up once, we'll only have streets blocked once instead of twice. This is really good sense, and thank you very much, Mr. Webb. I know the residents are very happy about that.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
How can I follow that? I have none.
Okay. Mr. Selich?
I have nothing this evening.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor pro Tim Hen?
Well, it's been a busy week for meetings. We had an economic development committee meeting, and the principal business item was a presentation, quite a good one, I would say, by Monique-
Navarette.
Navarette, yes. She did an excellent job with that presentation on business license taxes, and the economic development committee is going to form a subcommittee and explore that issue more deeply on behalf of the business community here. So I expect they'll come back at a later date with a report or a recommendation to council. The economic development committee also, a few of the members took a look at the zoning code proposal and concluded that it did not have substantive impact from a business development standpoint, and therefore chose not to make comments. With regard to the finance committee, we had a fairly busy meeting. We reviewed and recommended changes to the city's investment policy. This is a good thing to do every so often. I think we've done it now two years in a row, had, had another look at that, and it's a good thing to do to stay on top of it. The citizens should be aware that we have a very conservative investment policy that emphasizes safety and liquidity above return, and we've had very good experience with it, and it's very well managed. With regard to our purchasing, the, the committee also looked at our council policy F-14 and concluded with the city attorney's help that we're going to have another look at how we do our policies, particularly along the lines of establishing a higher-level policy approach to our council policies and separating out the implementation of policy into an administrative document as opposed to a council policy document. We also reviewed the bond financing schedule and to provide assurance that the city will in fact have an opportunity to make a prudent decision on the Civic Center project before the final borrowings are authorized, and so I'm confident that that is well in hand in the appropriate way. The July 4th committee, it's the, officially, it's the safety, the West Newport, the West Newport Safety Committee, I call it the July 4th committee. We had a public meeting to follow up on the, our experience from this last July 4th, which the police department and the committee in general felt was a better experience this year than prior, although clearly there are some things that we can do better, especially for the gated communities along Coast Highway that had trouble with people jumping over 10-foot walls and, in some cases, throwing kegs over 10-foot walls to get, to get into West Newport with their liquor. But in any event, we'll do a better job on that next year, and we'll also make some additional changes that I think will take us another step along the line of having a family-friendly Fourth of July even in West Newport. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hen, and I have no report, so we will move on to public hearings, item 16, on the Rhine Channel Contamination Sediment Cleanup Project Mitigated Negative Declaration. Your staff report?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is a big night for the lower bay, especially for the Rhine Channel, and I'll, I'll talk for a little while while Chris gets going there. So tonight, we're asking you to hold a public hearing and then approve what's called a mitigated negative declaration, and that's a SEQA document, California Environmental Quality Act, and it's associated with our ability and our efforts this year and your budgeting of about $4 million from the very treasured general fund to do a project that would remediate toxics sediment in the Rhine Channel. With that, I'll let Chris Miller, our Harbor Resources supervisor, continue on.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, and for the introduction. I'm here to talk about the Rhine Channel, and, and tonight, we're talking about adopting the mitigated negative declaration that City Manager Kiff just introduced, and we're going to ask that the city council conceptually approve the project, which includes removing the contaminated sediments from the Rhine Channel as well as the other sites, which are in front of the Marina Park site, which is just the contaminants in front of Marina Park, the American Legion, and the 15th Street Public Dock. And then we'd like to take that, those sediments to the Port of Long Beach in their, in their fill site, which is called the Middle Harbor Redevelopment Project. Just to give a little history here, these are some pictures of the Rhine, and as you can see, largely, they were, this was a commercial area used by the fishing industry. There's a lot of legacy contaminants, a lot of shipbuilding is done here from the 40s and 50s, and we don't know what they did with, with their debris and their batteries and everything, so we're paying for it now. The state has declared this area, the Rhine, a toxic hotspot priority site. And this just shows where the project site will be. This is the Rhine, as we all know, and this right here is the Marina Park site, the American Legion, and 15th Street. And again, not to confuse this project with our Marina Park project, what we're aiming to do is to just, we already know that the Marina Park project has some contaminants out in the water, and so what we're trying to do is, from an economies of scale perspective, come down and pick up the 5,000 or so cubic yards of contaminants that are in front of Marina Park. And while we're, while we're dredging and getting rid of it, we may as well swing by Marina Park. It's not going to affect the beach or the composition of the areas in the water. So I'm briefly going to go over the project description, which is to remove contaminated sediments which are unsuitable for disposal in the ocean or for beach nourishment. We'd like to reuse those 150,000 cubic yards of sediment, which is what we're taking to the Port of Long Beach, and what they're doing over there is they're increasing the size of one of their shipping terminals, and they'll be creating a longer wharf and creating more upland space. We'd like to also coordinate this project with the Army Corps of Engineers Lower Bay Project, and that would be ideal. It'd be ideal if both projects occurred at the same time or, or shortly after one another. The Lower Bay Project has funding and a whole bunch of other things that we're considering, but the city, we really need to take care of the Rhine Channel because of this Port of Long Beach opportunity to get rid of our contaminants, so we'd like to move ahead with that. It would be great if we could coordinate with the Corps. And again, the, the Port of Long Beach is the preferred site for disposing of our contaminants because it permanently removes them. It's proven technology, it, and, and it doesn't require rehandling of the material. Like, if we were to take all of our contaminants via trucks to an upland disposal site like a, like a landfill, imagine the impact that would have on, on our roads and community and air quality and so on and so forth. So the Port of Long Beach is a really good solution. Briefly, our project description, it'll last about four to five months. We're aiming to start, if all goes well, and if the Port of Long Beach accepts our material, which we haven't heard from yet, in about January of 2011. The hours for dredging would occur during normal construction hours approved by the city, which is 7:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Mondays through Fridays and Saturdays during daylight, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We'd likely start at the north end of the Rhine Channel and move our way down in kind of segments, and of course, the, the channel will have limited access, but we'd make sure emergency vehicles or vessels are able to get through. Some potential impacts, we have some BMPs that, that we're considering, and general BMPs are no dredging from land-based equipment, and of course, if there's any floating debris, we will take care of that and scoop it up and haul it off, of course.
Sorry, Chris, a BMP is a best management practice?
Thank you. Our water quality BMPs, you know, we'll, we'll have silk curtains out there, we're going to have water quality monitoring plan, spill prevention control and countermeasures Our barges are going to be very carefully monitored by the regulatory agencies. If there's any deviation in, in, if, if they're sinking or if they're rising, they have sensors on all the barges that, that, that's a trigger to the agencies that there may be something going on with that barge, so things are very carefully monitored. Air quality, we will, we will meet the South Coast Air Quality Management District requirements, and I'll get into that a little bit later. Noise, we will stay within the timeframes by the city code, and navigation, emergency vessels will be able, whoops, sorry about that. Navigation, I've, I've addressed that, and it, it'll be minimal, but our emergency vessels will be able to go through. One of the, I would like to address the water board's comments that are included in your, in the mitigated negative declaration in the staff report. I've also given some handouts here this evening, which I'd like to be part of the record, and there's also, also some additional handouts in the, on the table out front, and those specifically address the water board's comments. And so for the water board's comments, items, questions, or items number one through six, we had expected that we would have completed revising our comments to the water board sooner, hence the language in the staff report is in the past tense, and the draft mitigated negative declaration in front of you does not have the changes incorporated yet. So I've just distributed the pages for, that I'd like for you to read and consider for tonight's action with revisions for the council's consideration. For the water board's six and seven, there are issues on six and seven, we have continued to evaluate these comments, and we've concluded there are no potentially significant environmental impacts in these areas, and the water board has not identified any impacts that were not evaluated in the mitigated negative declaration. Therefore, no change to the mitigated negative declaration is needed to address these comments. However, of course, the city is and will continue working through the permitting process to address these concerns that the water board brought up. In summary, we have found no potential, potentially significant impacts, none were identified per the SEQA guidelines. The impacts to air quality were less than significant with mitigation incorporated. The MND recommends 11 mitigation measures to reduce air quality impacts to a point where clearly there's no significant impacts would occur, including the purchase of mitigation credits, and that's one thing we do have to do, is purchase these credits, which will offset the air quality impacts, therefore they're mitigated. And the mitigation measures are identified in the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. So that concludes my brief, my brief presentation. I'm available for, for questions, and our consultant, anchor QEA, is also here to provide some technical backup as well.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Other questions? Councilmember Gardner?
Two questions. How does it affect, suddenly the Port of Long Beach says, well, you know what, we're not, we're behind schedule a year or so, we just delay our, our project, or how's that going to work? Are we wed very closely to them in terms of this project?
We are, and we'd like to be. We'd like that, that union. However, if, we are planning for a January 2011 start date, because they told us a best-case scenario is that they might be ready for us in January, so we're taking that to heart. If they are not ready for any number of reasons, that allows us to take a deep breath, we can, we can adjust our pace, but for right now, we're focusing on the January 11th. We'd be happy to postpone it as long as we still got a, a seat at the, at the Port of Long Beach's table.
So that, that wouldn't, just a timing, but nothing else?
Correct.
Secondly, at the Harbor Commission meeting, there was concern about access, and what you were saying about there'd be emergency vessel accesses, or something about being able to take the boats out in that area, particularly in view of the dredging, and does this, are they consistent with, with what you said, the emergency vessel access, but also the ability for people to get their boats in and out?
Yes, well, that's the next part of our planning process in the coming months, is to figure out how we're, what, what we're going to do with the vessels that are in the Rhine Channel. We are going to have to find a home for them because they're, they're going to have to be removed from their slip, and if we do it in, in segments, start at the north and, and then divide the Rhine Channel into three segments, we're going to have to really be creative and maybe use some, some moorings. But to answer your question, you know, we're going to allow people to go in and out, like, like the shipyards. For instance, Shock, Shock Boatyard is up there, and we can't have them be out of business for three or four months, so we're going to work with them, and, and they're on board with the, with the project. There'll be some communication with the contractor, so we'll have to work kind of on a day-to-day, hour-to-hour basis, and, and open up some windows while the barges are in and out, so that Shock can get boats in, as an example.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Hen?
Yeah, Chris, you know, this is connected with, we hope, the, the rest of the lower bay dredging that's required. If the remainder of the lower bay dredging gets substantially delayed, the funding for it, will that substantially increase the cost to us? I know cost isn't, you know, particularly an issue here on the mitigate negative deck, but I'm just curious, could that result in a significant increase in the cost for the cleanup of the Rhine Channel?
Right now, the estimated cost that we have, estimated this time because we don't have bids out, is, is about $4 million, and we still think we're going to be about in that, in that range. We are, that is assuming that the city goes at it alone. If, if the, if the Corps and the federal government does end up getting enough funding to start their project about when we want to start our project, I think there could be some economies of scale there with MOB and DMOB perhaps, but probably not overly significant.
So the $4 million number is basically a standalone project? So the $4 million number is basically a standalone project cost?
Right, right.
Any questions? Councilmember Daigle?
Yes. When do we anticipate Port of Long Beach? Will, we will find out if we're the, one of the ones accepted, maybe 30, 60 days? What's our timeframe?
I'm waiting by the phone every day, and I'm sitting on pins and needles. But the estimate that I've heard is within about, all the applications were submitted June 30th, and I think within about 60 days of that, so July, August, probably the end of August, first part of September, I think, is when for sure we should hear something.
Right.
That's a good guess.
And then our application is 150,000 cubic yards Rhine, and then is it 600,000 for the federal channels?
Yes, it is.
Okay, total.
So we have about 750,000 cubic yards from Newport Beach to go into the Port of Long Beach.
Right. Well, I really appreciate all of your hard work on this. I mean, there's been many, many reports and studies and functions and that, you know, the manager has placed an emphasis on this, and you've just been very attentive and made it happen. And I know a couple of years ago, when I met Anchor Environmental, and they said that they would potentially have some solutions to solve what's really been the big problem, disposal. You know, I went to then Councilman Curry at the time, and, you know, he recognized that, you know, we have the opportunity to make just a major breakthrough for our community and solve this problem. And I know everyone said over the years, it's the money that's, we haven't dredged the bay, but it's really, you know, we just didn't have a cost-effective solution for the disposal. So I really appreciate all your work, and, you know, just keep plugging away.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions from the council, the public hearing is open. Let me invite any members of the public who'd like to speak on this matter, please come forward. Do you want to speak on the Rhine Channel issue, sir?
On the redevelopment.
Yeah, we're not quite there yet. Okay, we'll be up here in a minute. Okay, seeing that, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Daigle?
Sure, I'd make a motion to adopt the MND.
Second.
One brief comment. City Attorney and I were conferring about at least Action Three, whether it should be not just conditional approval, it should be approved. But I don't know if, any strong objections to that, Chris, that you see? Sorry, we're public policy on the fly here, but...
No, I don't have any objections. However, I believe how it would work is when we bring the project to, back to City Council for bidding, pardon me?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
For the bidding process and opening up for the, however we bid for construction, for the dredging project, and then we award the contract, I think that is when the council would approve the project, if I'm right?
That's when they'd award the contract to constructor to do the work. But they're approving the project now. With the mitigated negative declaration, you've completed your environmental review, and you've identified how the project is to be performed, and they can, if you wish, take action to actually approve the project now.
That would be preferred.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, Councilmember Gardner?
No, I thought, I didn't know there'd been a second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on now to Item 17, Cliff Drive Appeal. That's Item 17, sir. You're on Item 22. I'll let you know. Stay close. We'll try and move quickly here. Item 17, Cliff Drive Appeal, 2949 Cliff Drive. Is there a staff report, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is, as you note, an item that you would conduct a de novo hearing tonight and adopt a resolution if you agree with staff denying the appeal and upholding and affirming the decision of the Planning Commission. Jim Campbell is here to make a brief staff report.
Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this item was before the zoning administrator and was denied due to lack of facts to support the findings that are required by the municipal code. It was an appeal. It went to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission upheld that decision and also denied the application. So again, this is a de novo hearing, as indicated, and in this, we are recommending denial of the appeal at this point in time. I do have a presentation. I can show you pictures if you so choose. There was extensive photographs for your staff.
I would like to have you show some pictures because I did go through the CD, but I wasn't always sure what I was looking at, which part was the questionable part.
Okay, this is the site plan. Okay, this is the street up here, Cliff Drive. It's a sloping property. We have significant vegetation here above the Mariners' Mile commercial area, single-family home, existing pool, and this is a gazebo that's already in place. The structure in question is here, it hatched. The line, this dark line here and here is the setback lines. This is the required rear yard setback of 10 feet, required five-yard setback of four feet. So we really have two structures that are connected, and this is sort of a structure with a higher grade, if you will, but has like a kitchen in here and a dining table. This is really an outdoor room or patio. There's a large fireplace here in the corner. And there's a blow-up of the area there, and the red lines here are the setbacks. So this is indicating how tall it is and how much of the encroachment. So it's four feet, four to five feet in this area here, and in this area right here, it's much less than that. It's really just a foot or so. All right, here is this overview of the site plan. Again, these are the structures here in the far rear corner. Again, Mariners' Mile now is down in the bottom of the photograph here.
And that was Cliff Drive Park on the right?
Correct. So the main house is here on the right-hand side of the photograph, the pool is here in the foreground. So this is that upper room with a kitchen, dining area, if you will, and this is the lower room here.
All of this is the back portion?
All of this.
Thank you.
Now, the portions that you see here in the foreground are not encroaching into that setback area. It's just really a back portion. So this is the living room, if you will, and there is a fireplace in the back corner. So it's really five feet of, five feet of this portion of the building here. So the setback line runs right through here, and you basically have to cut off five feet four inches of the structure, and the structural supports are in the setback area.
Except for, all right, we have the setback issue.
Yes.
But it was built without any permits?
That's correct. None of this was permitted. It was discovered due to routine fire inspection of the slope below. You know, they have submitted for a building permit, as extensive corrections necessary to make this comply. There's openings here on the property line that are too closed, they have to be closed in. This is actually a structural deck. This is actually not on grade. This is a raised deck that we're standing on here because it's a sloping property, and the structural integrity of this needs to be verified before a building permit.
That's why I wanted to clarify. So we have encroachment issues, and then we have a building permit issue, but we also have code issues as far as building codes?
Yes, I think you want to look at it sequentially. You look at the encroachment issues with the modification permit, the appeal here this evening. If that is approved, then the applicant could make additional corrections that would be necessary and provide the additional information for the building department to make sure it's up to code. Obviously, then we have to go through inspection process.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
This is that upper structure here with the area. So it's kind of hard to see in this photograph here. I think maybe this photograph shows a little better. The property line is basically right here at these bushes, and this is the encroaching area here on that side here. So it's fairly close proximity to the neighbor's property. And this is again, the upper structure, and this is about two feet here where a four-foot requirement is mandated. Part of the encroachments, you can see here in this slide, there's some openings to the property line, and these openings aren't allowed. They'd actually have to be a full-height wall in here. Anyway, we've got three required findings of the municipal code for the approval of a modification permit, and there are no facts to support any of the findings. I think the one finding about whether this would be detrimental or not to the community, I think we probably could be met, provided the structure passed muster with the building code. Are there any special circumstances with the property that really would warrant relief from the code? Probably not. I think a lot of folks are sympathetic, and this is a fairly sizable structure. It's very expensive to modify it, alter it, to comply, will necessitate significant alteration. In essence, these structural supports in the setback would have to be pulled back over here, four feet away. So it's probably going to cost as much to alter it, to fix it, as it did to construct this structure. So, you know, the owner is obviously concerned about the cost, but again, they proceeded ahead without any building permits, and so here we are, they're seeking forgiveness, if you will. Again, staff is recommending denial due to lack of facts to support the required findings.
Any complaints from neighbors?
None that I'm aware of.
Any other questions for Mr. Campbell? Mr. Webb?
I'm curious, the professionals that prepared the designs and did the construction, are they licensed? And did they advise their clients they should have building permits?
I think that question should probably be addressed by the applicant. I believe they're here this evening. I'm not sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Let me open this hearing up for comments from the public. Is the applicant here? Would he like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Seeing no members of the public wishing to speak, I'll bring it back to the council and close the public comment period. Mr. Rosansky?
Yeah, well, this is in my district here. You know, this is an example of better to ask forgiveness than to ask permission. And these are not insignificant improvements, they're substantial improvements. I would imagine that the applicant probably knew that they needed to get permits and just didn't, as many people do, and now they've, you know, they've come to us and asked us to bless us, and, I mean, it's, you know, it's not just a matter of a couple inches. I mean, we're talking about five feet at some point. So I would say, I mean, the applicant didn't even take the time to come down here and plead his case at both the zoning administrator level and the planning commission level. It was denied, and no additional facts were presented, which either of those bodies felt was significant enough to grant a modification. And so I would move that we accept the recommendation of the staff.
Second. All right, motion and second to accept the staff recommendation to deny the modification. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We're now on public comments on matters not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on a matter not on the agenda?
Yes.
You want to speak about the reuse of the City Hall site?
The redevelopment, once, I have a suggestion, but once you develop this property, and I have raised about $5 million.
Sir, that item actually is on the agenda, so it'll be coming up shortly.
Okay.
Okay? All right, seeing no speakers, I would take note that Laura Dietz was here, and had she been able to stay, she would want to remind everybody that Lobster Fest is Sunday at the Newport Dunes. It's a great event. I think I'm going to be there. I encourage you all to go. With that, we will go to Item 18, which is proposed to be, this is the HOG Development Agreement, which is proposed to be continued. The agenda says August 10, but actually, I understand they are requesting it be continued to September 14.
That's correct.
Is there a?
I move it continued to September 14.
Second. Is there anyone in the audience who feels the need to speak on this motion to continue? All right, seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item 19, sale of bonds for Assessment District Number 100. Is there a brief staff report?
Mr. Mayor, I should, I presume Mr. City Attorney recused myself for the advent of this item since I live in the district.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, there could be a staff report if you'd like, just for the public's certification, though this is the sale of bonds for Assessment District 100, which, as Councilmember Hen noted, is an area where he lives. Unless you had any specific questions, Dan Matashevitz is here. Otherwise, I refer that back to you.
I found it was an extremely clear report, and I'd like to move the recommended actions.
Second. Motion and second. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak on this matter? All right, seeing none, any further council discussion? Please vote.
With Mayor Protem Hen recusing himself, the motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Item 20 is the creation of an ad hoc committee on updating harbor charges. I would make it known that my intent would be to appoint the Mayor Protem, Mr. Hen, Mr. Selich, and Mr. Rosansky to this committee. Is there a?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this item? Come forward, please. All right, seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item 21 is delegation of voting delegates for the 2010 League of Cities Conference in San Diego. My intention to appoint Councilmember Daigle as the city's voting delegate and myself as alternate.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we're now at Item 22, creation of an ad hoc committee for the reuse of the City Hall site. For the record, it would be my intention to appoint myself, Mayor Protem Hen, and Councilman Rosansky to this committee. And maybe before we have public comments on this, let me just stop and maybe recognize Mr. Hen, if you'd like to make some comments on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a strong step forward if council does approve this this evening toward developing a very rational and well-informed approach on not just the reuse of the City Hall site, but also the other properties adjacent, including Viola Lito Plaza and Lito Marina Village. I think it is a right thing to do, to try and develop a coordinated, integrated development plan for this arc of area, and such that the individual property owners, as they proceed with their individual plans, have a common vision to work toward. I think at the end of the day, there will be, that we will all be well-informed as to the decision on the reuse of the City Hall site by this process and through the use of a professionally managed land use planner to be able to help us understand whether, for example, the City Hall site should have predominantly public reuse or predominantly private reuse, or some combination of that. But at least when we get to that decision, which I would imagine would stand to be somewhat controversial, at least we'll be as well-informed factually as we can as to what's the right answer. Staff has endeavored to set up a process here that provides for plenty of opportunity for public input, and particularly as to the reuse of the City Hall site, good guidance from council along the way, as well as the public input. So I'm enthusiastically supporting this. It's consistent with the council's priorities established in January of this year, and would invite the comments from the rest of council and public about it.
Thank you. Before I open it up, are there any council comments? Seeing none, then I'm going, Councilmember Daigle?
I would also, you know, support this approach. What we did up in Airport Business Area, you know, utilizing that kind of approach, I think, can be very successful. One thing we learned along the way, though, is having a little flexibility, you know, as market conditions change. So I think it's great, and I really support it.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
I support the concept, too, as long as we definitely look at public uses and not necessarily intense uses. This is an extremely well and heavy-developed area, and I want to make sure that we are able to consider options that, in effect, might even call this open space as opposed to the highest dollar-making amount. And so as long as that's part of the option, which it appears to be, I think I can support it, too.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Let me open this up now to public comments, sir. Now is the time. And come forward, here we have a microphone for you. Please state your name, and you have three minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. As the unofficial mayor of Newport Beach, I'd like to be involved in the redevelopment of this location with a, that would create...
State your name, please, for the record.
Willie Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
That would create a lot of tax dollars, million-plus a year for the city. I'm thinking, I'm putting together, by the way, I'm an architect, contractor, and carpenter, and land developer. So my suggestion is hotel, solar green, and a parking structure, which is causing congestion, that's what's causing me need parking. So my project is going to consist of a hotel and parking structure. I raised so, at this point, a few million dollars, and I have some more resources that I'm getting involved in the project. So I would just like the City Council to consider a hotel, solar green, and parking structure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Mr. Boyd is, by the way, the unofficial mayor of Newport Beach. He and I have had the opportunity to speak, in fact, on occasion, and, you know, he keeps coming down here... know, he keeps coming down here. He may be the official mayor, who knows. We have another speaker. Please come forward, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is, my name is Doug Dryer. My wife and I have lived in Newport Corona del Mar for over 50 years. We're a property owner on 3416 Viola, which is right across the street. The notice in the register said that there would be the intent to form a committee to evaluate and look at ways to wisely use the city council or the present city chamber's property, also the Lido Plaza and Lido Marina Village. My question to you is, will there be any public participation in any of your committee meetings with respect to their input as it, excuse me, as it affects their property or their interest? So I don't know if you can answer that question, but that's my question.
The intent is for the ad hoc committee to be a Brown Act ad hoc committee, so it will, its meetings will be publicly involved.
Open, open to, excuse me, input?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have to say. We would look forward to this project, taking a real hard look at it from the long term. There have been, as you know, seven buyers or owners of Lido Marina Village. None of them have ever had a decent marketing plan. None of them have ever really looked at the long term. They've been primarily investors, seeking a return. Each time they bought, someone new bought it, they would pay more money. They would raise the rents, drive tenants out. So as you know, Lido Marina Village right now is almost a ghost town, and it's a shame, because it could have been a real jewel for the city of Newport Beach. So thank you for your patience.
Thank you for coming down today. Are there any other speakers on this matter?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, as the folks know, hopefully at home, if you need to, would like to be notified of those types of meetings, you're very welcome to leave some information with me. We'll set up an email list, and/or those will be on our website, so keep a watch on that.
I think it's safe to say that there will be public participation of a significant degree in this project as we go through it in terms of both hearings and informational sessions and listening sessions and those kinds of things, to make sure that we do get the full input from the community on what we're doing. All right, if there's no further members of the audience wishing to speak on this matter, I'll bring it back to the council. The motion's on the table. Mr. Webb, motion on the table? Did you make a motion? Maybe it hasn't?
He didn't. I did. I will, and with the recommendation of your.
Second.
Point is.
Okay, motion and second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, the next item is a special item that was brought on and added to the agenda at the direction or under the rules provided by the city attorney. And Mr. City Attorney, do you want to introduce this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may. This is a matter that's, we're revisiting the charter update resolution and the ballot measure that's been put on the agenda by, put on the public ballot by the city council. We have, this was added to the council's agenda based upon events that have occurred since the posting of the agenda and requiring action by the council prior to its next regular meeting. The regular meeting would have been August 10. However, we need to have action prior to August 6. We have, in floating this measure, the way it works is, is that you have an argument in favor that is drafted, and then you have arguments in opposition. There's been something of a controversy that's worked up regarding an argument over opposition that, whether or not it meets the actual requirements of the elections code. The opposition was offered by California Industry Force Account Council. How did I not remember that?
Construction.
Thank you. Construction Industry Force Account Council. We have representatives of Construction Industry Force Account Council here today. In trying to work out the issues related to the actual posting of the argument, as well as the election issues, we've been working with Construction Industry Force Accounts, Council, I should say CFAC's attorney, trying to work out alternative language that would still meet the city's needs for the charter update and avoid any further potential conflict with CFAC or its representative associations. We came up with a slight change of the language dealing with Charter Section 1110, and that's the one dealing with public contracting. The city clerk is handing out to you a proposed resolution. It's essentially, it is exactly the same resolution with two typos we missed in the ballot title that you've approved back on July 6, I believe. And if you switch, if you flip to Exhibit 1, we've updated that to deal with the language that was requested and negotiated with CFAC. And I will tell you the page, six, and pages, yeah, five and six, you have modified language. Now, this was language that we were working out with the attorney for CFAC. I have since received an email from the attorney that I did not see, because while I was in closed session, that raises some question as to whether we had the full comments by CFAC. But at this point, I would like to allow for CFAC to present their position and to address the council, if that's the mayor's wish.
Well, let me just put this issue in context. In our negotiations, we identified some language changes that in our study session you had indicated would satisfy the needs of your constituents. Have we reached that agreement?
Since things are fluid, and I think right up until the last minute, basically yes, but I haven't seen the final wording until just now, but it's agreed to by our attorney, and she told me that.
All right. And for the people watching at home, the issue is, is that the organizations represented here are unions and union contractors, who have an interest in ensuring that as much possible city work is bid out and bid out in ways that encourage us to use prevailing wage and union work. We don't have a issue, and the city doesn't have an issue with competitively bidding. You know, we want to be, we bid all our work that's major work, and we want to continue to do that and get the advantages of competition. Their concern was that we, that they thought the language created loopholes that allowed us to just award contracts to people without competitive processes, and we believe we have now crafted language that satisfies the issues that they're concerned with. Right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Let me, perhaps I should just walk through the language that we proposed after discussions with CFAC's attorney, and then see if the representatives of CFAC agrees. This language is proposed in order to resolve any kind of dispute between the city and CFAC, both legal and the election dispute. I'll come back to the dollar amount, but I will address two different areas that are reflected in our charter. One is, is under the first paragraph, the original charter amendment was to create, allow the city council, have the city council designate an index to change or to adjust the threshold amount.
Just point out what the changes are. Pardon? Just point out the changes.
That's what I'm doing. I was trying to. The, and it basically says, "The formal bid dollar amount may be adjusted annually for inflation pursuant to the index specified by the city council." The change here would be may, instead of shall, and to add in language that says "for inflation" to clarify that the index would be for inflation only. The next change that was, that we've discussed is, is in the last paragraph, which was longer identifying what exceptions and regulations that can be passed by the city council, has been reduced to two lines, which now states, "The city council shall have the power to establish standards, procedures, rules, or regulations in order to implement the provisions of this section." And I believe we have understanding with CFAC on those issues. There's been one other issue regarding an "or" that's been raised, that I got an email about that I just saw a little bit ago. In the second to last paragraph, which I don't believe we've even discussed, so she may wish to address that, I don't believe it does anything to change the language of the charter. In fact, it's the old charter language, not affected by our amendment. And the last issue was, what is the dollar amount threshold that the city council would choose? As I understood it, the city council, the concern from CFAC's standpoint is that using $125,000 was so similar to a previous number chosen under the Public Contracting Code for the Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act, that they would prefer us to use a different number. If the council would choose a different number, that would be acceptable to CFAC. I would need to confirm that that, that this is the understanding.
Tonight's, we're going to confirm everything. So how are we, are we okay?
100,000 instead of 125 is what we requested.
That's not what was communicated to me via telephone by CFAC's attorney. I didn't see that until just about half an hour ago in an email that was sent. She communicated to me, as long as it's not 125, whatever number the council chose, it would be acceptable to CFAC. So this is a clear statement by the executive director of CFAC that they were saying 100,000.
Right.
I don't believe the council is inclined to go to 100,000. Our understanding was, is that we just needed to choose a different number than the 125. Perhaps you could clarify that for us.
Well, you already have the legal remedy, which you choose not to do, which is to go, to become signatory, to coquette. That is their number. That is an incentive for other jurisdictions to sign up for it. My attorney actually told me that you had discussed, I'm sorry, but 100,000. So can you tell me what number you were thinking of?
I left that blank in the resolution, so the council could designate what it chose. I thought it was most appropriately addressed in the context of open session. As was communicated to me by your attorney orally over the telephone, we needed to choose a number. She didn't say, she said any number, so.
120. Let me explain why.
I think the council gave closed session direction that the number was 120.
No, 130.
130, excuse me, 130.
You're going up from 120?
Yeah.
She said any number we chose. I can be comfortable in recommending to the council 120, as we, and I can be comfortable in recommending to the council 130. I think we're completely within the rights of the city to make a choice. I think it's commercially reasonable to use 120. I think it's commercially reasonable to use 130. I understand that 100,000 is being asked for by CFAC. The council's previously made a determination it felt 125 was the appropriate number, so something closer to the 125 may be the better choice.
Would you like to hear our rationale?
Yeah.
Keeping it low is in the interest of startup contractors that are not major contractors, also, you know, business, women's business and minority businesses. And so if you use the lower number, it provides them an opportunity to do the bidding as well. That's been our position. So I would like to recommend that you consider, if not the 100,000, 120, as opposed to 130.
Well, and I would simply ask Ms. Hilliard, if the council chose 120, went with the modifications identified in the resolution that have been presented to you, would that be acceptable to CFAC, such that CFAC would agree that it would not pursue legal challenges and would not engage in electoral challenge of this matter, and it would encourage its member agencies, that this would not be a matter of electoral challenge that it should engage in?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, I can speak for, what I've been doing is, I've been on the phone with all of our, you know, major board members, the ones who represent this area, and they have given me the authority to do this. But like your staff, coming back to you as a council, I also have to go back to our board of directors and get their final approval. However, I am convinced that I can do that. Speaking for all the agencies that belong to CFAC, we're talking about associated general contractors. We're talking about Southern California Contractors Association. They have representatives on our board, and I would definitely sit down with them and show them the advantage of going back to their membership organizations and what you will be giving us here. We also haven't seen your final language. It's kind of, let me see yours, and I'll show you mine, that we would make a major effort to keep them from, you know, opposing. However, having said that, I can tell you that CFAC itself, as an organization, would withdraw opposition, would not pursue court action, and would not oppose you. So that's the best I can tell you.
And I would just say that you do have our final language in your hands, except it doesn't have the number filled in. And just so you know that you have the final language, and that I could comfortably recommend $120,000 in light of that circumstance.
I'm fine with 120 unless there's.
120? Is there a motion to approve this with $120,000 as proposed?
Second.
Motion and second. Okay, we're on good faith here, right?
We are.
Okay. And this does, I think, the purpose of all of this, by the way, for those watching at home and who are now utterly and completely confused, is that, you know, the city of Newport Beach has no intention to abandon the process of competitive contracting. What we're doing is we're raising the threshold so that we don't spend more money on bid processes for small contracts than we actually have the price of the contract. This enables us to do this, and I think it shows to the contractor community, our good faith to continue a competitive and open process for our major construction contracts. With that, please vote. Well, is there anybody else from the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you for coming down, and thank you for working with the city to resolve these matters. We appreciate it.
And just for clarification, you've adopted the revised resolution with the $120,000 figure.
Correct. Now, one, Mr. Hen reminds me that we skipped over the Citizens Technology Task Force report. Mr. City Manager, would you like to make some comments on this? I think it's a receivable item.
It does have a recommendation that I would return to you with recommendations in a few meetings, so you did hear this study session.
Okay, is there a motion to that regard?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any member of the public wishing to speak? Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, motion for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? All right, seeing that, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Webb for an adjournment memorial tonight.
Thank you. I'd like to close this meeting tonight in memory of Gregory Vance Kishaw. He is the father of my daughter-in-law Paige, and we share granddaughters Lauren and Molly. On Sunday, July 18, Greg was training with other Maritime Museum of San Diego docents on board the Star of India, and was preparing for a November sail as a part of a tall ship regatta. While unfurling a sail, he fell from the top sail yard. Greg has been a docent for nine years and was one of the most experienced crew members, and looked forward to his days aboard the museum ships. Greg was born in 1942 in the Panama Canal Zone while his father was working as an engineer to help build the canal. He graduated from Harvard and entered the U.S. Navy in 1963. He served aboard several ships, including the USS Nicholas, and he served as an embassy naval attache in Sweden, and his final tour was an intelligence officer in Coronado, where he retired as a commander after 40 years, after 20 years of service. He joined the SAIC firm in La Jolla as vice president, retired in 2001, and soon after became a docent at the Maritime Museum. He survived by his wife Carol, daughters Eve Dyke.
He survived by his wife Carol, daughters Eve Dyke and Paige Webb, grandsons Riley and Carson Dyke, and granddaughters Lauren and Molly Webb. Greg, with his family, spent many enjoyable hours here in Newport Beach with us. He was a true man of the sea, and we will all miss him. And in Greg's memory...